What do you think? I'm going to need you to be able to. Interest rates go down. And I think that's going to blow up again. I don't know. That's the only thing I can think.
Yeah, that's.
No, not from the other two, right?
No, I saw Jake, so I think there's someone.
Probably in the break room.
Yeah, I haven't.
Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is April twenty third, eight twenty four. We're beginning at four thirty P M. In the multipurpose room of West Valley St. Paul. Just as a note, I'll tell you now, not at the end or I'll forget. We will not have a meeting next month. I mean, next week because it's the fifth Tuesday. So no meetings next week. Okay. We have all members of the council present either in person or online. We have Councilman Harmon online. At the table, we have Councilman Norfeld, Councilman Hune, Councilman Fitziamanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Christensen and myself. We're also joined at the table by Mr. Peely, our city manager and Ms. Kamik, our city recorder. We'll now go to our minutes of April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. I'll turn those to the council for discussion or motion.
For the April sixteenth, men's study minutes. Second.
And then a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those stand approved. All right, well, now review our meetings for tonight. Did anybody have any questions on the regular meeting? And I didn't see any changes, correct?
No changes.
Okay. And then the special housing authority, were there any questions on that meeting? Are you the chair, Don?
Yes.
So you're good with that tonight? Okay, and no additions. All right, we'll move on to our study meeting. We have awards for next week, which is the Parks and Rec Award for their first centennial, the Bike Park Innovator Innovation of the Year and for the R C Crawl Course. So, well, ask Miss Young if she wants to come up and talk to us about that one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we were honored at our State Recreation Conference in St. George in March with the Facility of the Year for our Centennial Bike Park. Well, one of the great things that really helped us over the top with that award is that it was completely grant funded through the C D B G, which was really great. It didn't have a an impact on the city budget. And then the Innovation of the Year is the R C Crawler Course that we installed. It started as an intern project that was a one of the summer interns that we had from from B Y U and they we gave them some options of things and they really liked that project and it was a kind of an idea of one of our staff that were really excited about that and does R C crawling stuff as a hobby, does a lot of R C stuff as a hobby. And so we it started out as could we put a few rocks around and really we kind of took that and and ran with it and made a really great facility that is visited from people all over the state. We've had people visit the R C Crawler Course from out of state because it's just not something that's common to find in a public park that's that's easily accessible. And so we're really excited to have those awards. Our Executive Director of the Utah Recreation and Park Association will be here to present those. Her name is Leanne Powell and she will be here next week to present those awards to to us as a city.
So on May seventh?
Oh, on May seventh, yeah, a few weeks. Yep, because no meeting next week. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions about those?
Anything from the council? Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, well, now turn to our public hearings for next or on the seventh. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick for application Z T four, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed change from staff to the city sign ordinance. And really, this is a fairly simple change that is really more of a cleanup item. So right now, the code says that billboards, excuse me, billboards shall not be allowed in gateway oriented overlay zones regardless of the underlying zone. And the the problem with that language is that it doesn't actually specify which overlay zones. And so at the direction of legal, they suggested that we actually call out by name which overlay zones we mean by that. So that's really all this does is just clarify which overlay zones we're referring to.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pastrick? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, now turn the time to Mr. Morris for our Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about our Community Development Block Grant Award and recommendation for this year. I want to pay special or give special thanks to Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Fatissi Manu for helping the committee out as we kind of worked through this, their advice and counsel and dealing with the grants process and their on their time is was much appreciated. The count, the committee feels like we felt a lot more comfortable with what we were doing, trying to to follow your wishes. And I got Peggy Daniel here, who chairs that committee for us and kind of does the hard work there in case you have any questions. But you have the the recommendation before you. This year was a little bit different. We did not have the 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 number of applications that we typically get. Our theory for that is, is HUD continues to make the the application process and the requirements even more more and more owners every year that it discourages people. So it was a it was a little bit easier to make a recommendation this year, but that's all I have. If there's any questions.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Morris? Okay, great explanation. Thank you. All right, we'll go to our resolutions and we'll start with Mr. Flores on our select health health insurance coverage. And then go right into the dental.
Yep. Mayor and Council, thank you. So this is just our annual update to our the renewal of our health insurance benefit. It is pretty standard. We're not making any major changes to the plan or what we offer. We are implementing a six point nine percent increase in premiums. But aside from that, there's there's really no major changes. So I just wanted to ask you if you have any questions. There's anything you're curious of, or I can explain further with with our health insurance plan.
Any questions? So the six point nine percent increases on the employee side?
And of the city side.
So equally?
Yep, six point nine percent increase for both.
Okay.
I I'll throw in as well, sorry to interrupt. Just a reminder that we are self funded. And so that six point nine percent increase is our decision with the guidance of our benefits broker. So that that's a number they recommended that we agreed to. However, we get to decide what that increase is. It's it's not something forced on us by our provider. So just a reminder.
How long we've been doing that?
I believe, do I have it on here?
Do you use?
I think it has now been five years, five or six.
You do put it there?
Yeah, yep. Okay.
And dental?
Yes, so I'll just move on to dental, even simpler. No change at all. No change in premium cost. Plans doing really well. There's no need for an increase in premiums. And we we intend to keep everything the same as it is.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll turn the time over to Mr. Welch for our tentative budget conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Jim Welch, Finance Director for the city. The budget process, you'll see a lot of us in the next coming weeks. Is there a number of different resolutions that we need to pass? One of those by state law is the tentative budget, which is a budget that we pass. It's required by law to be passed first week in May. And then that's the budget that we can operate on until the final budget is passed, which can be either in June or else it can be by August. So we'll be working on that and I'll get more information. However, under the direction of city staff and the council, this pretty much represents what the budget will look like that is proposed. And I'd like to just kind of start off with some of the things that why we do it this way. The particular budget that we have is actually presented according to state law where it's required to be balanced. It unlike the federal government that doesn't have to have a balanced budget, our state constitution requires that. So that's a good thing. It also helps the municipalities and the local governments remain healthy and strong as they go into each fiscal year. So that's that's a good thing. We also prepare it to the standards that are given to us by the G A S B, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board. And we adhere very closely to the reporting standards of the Government Finance Officers Association and have, as you know, won the award for the Budget Award and the Financial Statement Award and then also our Public Financial Statements for a number of years that constitutes the Triple Crown, which I know Mr. Efo is familiar with. We're very proud of that. Takes an awful lot of work. And it represents an effort to provide transparency, accuracy, readability and consistency across financial statements. So with that being said, I wanted to put a couple of things on here for the budget calendar. We have a very stringent budget calendar that we have to adhere to. Many of these items are by code. Today, we're obviously presenting the tentative budget to you. This budget will be adopted in two weeks. There's two things that will occur that night. There will be the adoption of the tentative budget that will be for the general fund. And then there will be the proposed adoption of the redevelopment agency, housing authority and building authority budgets. That would be the last time you'll see them. So that will be reviewed tonight. There's really not many changes on those with the exception of the redevelopment agency, which they've been able to realize some additional increment that's beginning to come in. And they also have agreements with some of their developers. So their budget has gone up a little bit. The other two budgets are virtually the same as they have been the last couple of years. I'd be happy to address those at the end of the discussion after we get through the general fund. So let's take a look at the environment that we're currently looking at. I won't read through all this, but this is the kind of the my summary of what's going on with the budget this year. I'm sorry, with the economic climate. And you're all probably very familiar with it, that we've been basically operating like somebody threw gas on the fire for some time. And it's been burning pretty hot. Utah has benefited very substantially from that, as it usually does. Utah has one of the strongest economies in the country and has done for many years. The track record is that we survive recessions much better than other states. Our highs are pretty high, but our lows are never as low and that tends to continue. Our unemployment remains low, if not the lowest in the country, which is kind of a two edged sword. It also pushes our labor rates. So there's been some been some pressures that way that we have to deal with. Some other things that are kind of interesting that are going on on the federal government and the state level. The we're actually looking at some of the indicators that are saying that our economy is beginning to slow down. I know note that the leading economic indicators indexes have been negative. They just showed up negative this last week for the first time in two years. And that's a conglomeration of a number of different indexes. Also, the inverted yield curve on the two year versus the ten year treasury bonds has been a very good predictor of recession, which is currently inverted and has been for the last seventeen months. So does that mean in a recession is coming? We don't know. The experts out there right now are saying that they're expecting a slowdown. And the Federal Reserve is trying to moderate that, still keep the economy going. And I think they've done a pretty good job with it. But like I said, I think we're trying to come off of an experience of gas on the fire where things are not really burning as hot, but they're starting to smolder a little bit. We're still going in positive direction. So what does that mean to West Valley? It means that well, the economy, I believe, will continue to remain healthy in Utah. We may see some downturns in consumer demand, which will in turn slow down possibly some of our development from what it's been on. And also slow down some of our growth in in sales tax collections, which is a major portion of our portion of our revenue. And I'll address that in some of the upcoming slides. So anyway, feel free to read that at your leisure and I'd be happy to take any questions as we go through this. So raise your hand if something comes up. Typically, we just look at the general fund, but I thought it would be helpful for you and at the direction of Mr. Peely. We have brought the whole budget to you. It shows all of our funds conglomerate. So the total budget for the city this year is projected to be a hundred ninety five million. That's composed of the general fund, which is the the main operations fund of the city. And then the redevelopment agency is the next largest budget, twenty nine million. The arena, stormwater utility sanitation, you can see how it breaks down there. The expenses by classification, this is actually a chart that I haven't brought to this presentation before, but I thought it would be beneficial for you to understand just where the money actually goes. So a full fifty percent of the budget goes directly to personnel. And our next category is professional and technical services, which include things like the arena operations, the sanitation fund, central services, which is our communications. A number of R D A expenditures are run through professional and technical. Remind you that this is a conglomeration of all the budget for the whole city. Justice courts, things like that. And so when you put all those together, that's about another ten percent. Then we have debt service, about eight point eight. We have tax increment, which is specifically payments back to tax contributors in our redevelopment areas. Capital expenditures, you're very familiar with that. That includes our fleet, includes our improvements in properties and new buildings, also replacement of existing buildings. Our housing authority, which you just heard about, and then they start to fall off into our different funds that way. Okay, let's look at the general fund now, that fifty percent of our budget that we do most of our operations in is the the revenues are broken up into three parts. There's sales tax, property tax, and then there's the user fees and utility taxes. And I like to call that the three legs of the stool, which we've talked about before. I think it's a good balance. Each of these types of revenues, if we're able to keep those somewhat in balance, then it allows us to weather some of the uncertainty that we have with economic economic changes. As I mentioned before, as the economy starts to slow down and sales tax possibly will be slowing down. We don't have a crystal ball. What we do our very best for to prognosticate those things. That is offset by the strength of our property tax, which is very stable. And potentially our utility taxes and our user fees. So that's that's kind of the trifecta that keeps us running. In the expenses, obviously, our public safety is one of the largest charges that we have as a city. And consequently, public safety demands most over a budget. That's police and fire. Police has the largest budget at thirty six percent of the general fund and then fire at fifteen. And then the other departments fall off from there. I always get the question about what is non departmental? We don't have a department that's called non department. But that's where everything goes into the specifically classified to a specific department goes. So that would be things like the Utopia Debt Service Payment. It would be the transportation tax that we collect that specifically for roads. So we'll collect that in sales tax and it transfers through. It also includes the central services, things that I mentioned before. And that's largely the overall expenditures. Sales tax this next year. These are the projections in the past history that we've had. So we're projecting about two point nine percent growth this year over our projected number for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Now, one thing that's kind of interesting is last year we projected that twenty twenty four sales tax would be dropping. And I think our budget was around thirty nine million dollars. We've revisited that because of the collections that we're getting are better than what we projected. And so we feel like that two point nine percent is a reasonable expectation, given what's happening with the economy. So we watch it very closely and we try and keep a finger on that one to do our best to figure out what's going to happen next year. Realizing we're looking almost eighteen months out when we look at this. The property tax, this is, I've noted a couple of things that happened in here. Property tax is designed by state law to provide the same amount of revenue every year plus whatever new construction occurs within the city without any adjustments for rates, I mean, for values or for rates. So what happens is remains essentially flat until there's a property tax increase, regardless of what happens to the value of the properties that are there. So if you take all the houses in the in the city and all the businesses in the city and they're worth a certain amount of money and you have a lot of inflation and that value goes up by twenty percent, our revenue goes up by zero. And that's the way state law works. They give us a certified rate that adjusts the rate down. It's okay, means that we gets consistent revenues and you can see that in our chart here. However, if we have somebody that comes in and they build a new project, that new project will assess be assessed the next year and will have that as a growth. We have been getting somewhere around one percent ish growth from year to year. There are some fluctuations from year to year and a lot of that has to do with the calculation of things like centrally assessed property, which is stuff that that like railroads and transmission lines that the state goes out and they say, okay, how much goes through the city? Let's parcel that up. They take the depreciation. It's fairly complicated how they figure out how much we get and then they give us a portion of that. It also includes personal property, which is things like office equipment and and printing presses or lathes or whatever else you might fill any fill a warehouse with. That's print, personal equipment and personal property. And that can fluctuate a lot depending on the economy. So these are not exactly flat. I have pointed out a couple of things that have affected our revenue in a major way in the last ten years. We had an increase in operations in the city council. Remember this for two million dollars in in twenty seventeen and in twenty eighteen, we had a one million dollar operations increase that the city city council had had passed. We also, incidentally, that year had a two point eight million dollar judgment levy, which for those that are not familiar with that, was a rebate of property tax that we were required to pay the pay some large property taxpayers in one lump sum that was to come out of our property tax revenue. So that means that that year we would have been two point eight million dollars short. So we will be coming back to you every every year. The city has held what they call a truth in taxation hearing for at least the capture of the judgment levy. We never know what that is until mid June. Sometimes it's big, sometimes it's little. Usually it's pretty small. I think last year it was only forty eight thousand dollars. But it can have a significant impact on our budget. This particular year, it would have had a two point eight million dollar impact on the city. We were in pretty healthy conditions financially at that time. We we I say that collectively as the city and the council, excuse me, that city council determined that they would capture eight hundred thousand dollars of that two point eight million dollars and then implement an ongoing one million dollar increase in operations. So there were two million dollars that came out of our reserves to pay for that judgment levy last year. That's the biggest we've ever seen. And we don't anticipate anything like that going forward. Cross my fingers and knock on wood, that's the last time we see it. But we do see some fairly substantial ones. And we'll hold, we're anticipating on holding that truth in taxation again in August. Another adventure, reason I'm spending so much time on this one is because it provides us some advantages. One of those is that if we adopt the budget in June, that's good. We get our certified tax rate, but we don't have the option of capturing whatever that judgment levy is. So if we're going to do that judgment levy, then we bump our property, we bump our hearing back to August, which we've done for probably fifteen years now. It gives us time to evaluate the judgment levy. And it also gives us time to have a public hearing with the public with the council to go over the property tax process so that they understand what it is, they understand what's happening. I think that's really valuable to the council and to the public. It's it's a good transparency thing. Another benefit is it gives us the ability to actually evaluate our projections again with a little couple more months under our belt. Projections are always better, the closer you are to adopting your budget. So from a projection point of view, I like that a lot more. So that's that's property tax for you. I probably told you a lot more than you're interested in, but I thought that was good to review that process because it is unique that we hold truth in taxation every year. Not every entity does that. There's a bunch more that are beginning to largely because of we because we do it. This is a history of our utility taxes that's made up of electricity, gas, telecom and cable services. It's there's been some fluctuation within the last couple of years, as you've noticed, your utility tax bill going up particularly for natural gas, electricity. Consequently, there's a little bit more tax that we collect on that. That's another good portion of the collections that we have. The individual operation changes for the city this year, there's not a lot of them. However, the big one, which, as you know, being a a service entity that we face every year is the the inflation and the cost of maintaining good employees. Personnel costs, Mr. Flores talked a little bit about our insurance costs going up. In order to do that, the proposed increase was four point seven million dollars. Then there's a couple of program modification items that the council has considered, and this is the list that they gave management to include in the next budget. The revenue adjustments that we had, this is updating our our sales taxes from when they were previously adopted, not from when they were previously presented as proposals. So from our previously adopted budget a year and a half ago, well, presented budget a year and a half ago. We've had sales tax projections that are about two million dollars over what we thought they would be. That was because we budgeted very conservatively. Interest earnings are continuing to go well. We've been able to collect the the public treasures rate now is above five percent. And we expect that to remain somewhat elevated, even though we think it'll start to go down. The we believe those rates will hold. Then, of course, you saw utility tax. There were some adjustments in growth in property tax and then other various miscellaneous type of items make up that that difference there. It looks like, I guess that's it. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have with regards to that. I know it was an awful lot of information to go over. And that's one of the one of the biggest responsibilities of a city council is to adopt the budget and propose the operations and and we tried take that to manage your your will and your desires as best as we can, keep us within the confines of the law and within the governance that you exert and we appreciate that. So with that.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Welch? Yes.
Yeah, a couple. Education for me on slide back on that previous slide four. Personnel was the highest expenditure. But you know, you have multiple categories below it. So with those categories not including the personnel for that, so for road maintenance.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, these we actually, we have the ability to go in and we have every type of expenditure coded. type of expenditure coded. So we're able to pull out the cost of purely personnel. So that is, that is, that is wages, salaries and benefits. And that's it. That's in that personnel number.
And then a question on the actual budget. I don't know if you have that.
Sure.
But under all the departments, employee benefits either stayed flat or increased slightly except for fitness center or did you increase quite a bit? Off the top of your head. Why it decreased, but I was just, just saw the the difference with other departments, whether benefits stay flat or.
I do have the, the general budget, which I assume this is what you're looking at.
Under fitness center, page eight.
Let's take a look at that here.
Boy benefits just at a pretty. I mean relative, not overall budget.
Benefits are an interesting one to get your fingers around because it includes changes in personality. Every, everybody has different needs, whether it's family, one party. Coverage, things like that. So I don't, I don't have the actual numbers that are occurred in there. I know that our human resource department calculates those on an employee basis. So they try and get as granular as possible on those. My only guess on that one is that we've had changes in either personnel or the the benefits that they're required on an individual basis. So that's, yeah, I, I know that they give those, they're pretty accurate with this, but I don't have the specifics on that one.
And one other question, so I should have stayed with PowerPoint, but back on the slides. And I'm pretty sure you've answered this before, so I'm just testing you to make sure you're consistent. But the sales taxes are different for slide four and slide five.
The, the difference there is the difference between a proposed budget and adjusted projections. So the budget that was adopted in fiscal year twenty 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 four is different than the budget that's now projected. So if you look at the chart on, and I forget which number it is, the one that shows the general sales tax collections, that's a projected number. And that's designated by a P down by the date. So does that help? Cause the one that shows the previous slide is the number that was actually adopted.
Okay.
So there's a difference between the adopted and projected. So that's an updated projection. Right. Yeah, I should have been a little more clear on that one. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to follow up on your benefits and that for the fitness center? Do you want to follow up email or?
Like I said, it's just, just the thing I saw that was different with the other departments and it was.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly get with HR and and address that as closely as we can, probably not down to the individual basis, but an explanation for sure.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Welch? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, now go to resolution twenty four dash sixty eight and we have Mr. Thompson on Zoom. And he's going to talk to us about building inspection service agreement. There we go.
Sorry, I was reconnecting. Hello. Hi, Mayor, Council, Mr. Peely. Thank you. I am Jerry Thompson and I am the chief building official for West Valley City. Just kind of getting caught up on some things. As you may recall, this past legislative session, Senate Bill one eighty five was, was passed and signed by the governor. Within that, there was a requirement for a list to be maintained of jurisdictions or inspection agencies that we can be able to rely on for, in the case of inspections not being able to be completed in, in a timely manner, specifically being able to be scheduled three, more than three days out. So with that, one of the ideas that we've come together with a couple of the jurisdictions and is compliant with this law that will take effect May first is that the we're working with three other jurisdictions, specifically West Jordan, Sandy City and Metro Service District, which was formerly Salt Lake County. This is a, this agreement that's before you was put together with our attorney, specifically Brandon Hill. And their attorneys and basically was reworking a existing police and fire local agreements. They're, they're more in nature with what we'll be doing. Our primary intent with this is that we be able to provide inspections in a timely manner. But if we do, it is there for it, for us to do. I apologize. Am I getting notices that my internet's unstable? Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry. The
So do you want to turn off?
This is voluntary cooperation that we're doing. So if another city or entity contacts us, then we will be working on, I'm worried for not being more prepared with this. Is this better?
A little bit.
A little bit. Okay. Anyway, the, the agreement is designed, like I said, to be voluntary. It's not compulsory. So if a request is made for us to provide for an inspection, we would not be compelled to do it, but we can do it provided that we have the manpower and the time with this there. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay.
If the developer requests an inspect, inspection but schedules it for more than three days, do we still have the option of doing it ourselves or do we have to? Get a third party?
Yeah, good question. The, the requirement is only, this only comes into play if we cannot provide the inspection. So we are always the first point of where the inspection would be done. But if, if we can't provide an inspector for more than three days, then this would, would come into play. But if we, if they want to schedule it a week out, a month out, none of that would matter. If we have the time and the availability to do it, then, then we would do it.
And if the third party inspector identified a violation, how would that be handled? Would it be different than if the city identified a violation?
According to the, the state law, we have to accept that as if it was one of our inspectors. And so we would proceed forward as, as if it was one of our own inspectors doing the work. If they do, if they schedule an inspection, say for footing, then it's, it's just for that one element that they're doing the inspection for. And not, not the rest of the entire project.
So for the remediation, would they work through the city or through the third party?
It would work through the city. So a follow-up inspection would be done by the city to verify compliance on that. Or if we're not able to do it, then, then that would turn to a third party as well. Right now we are, most of our inspections are able to be scheduled the next day. So we have lots of availability to do this. Or rather that this would not come into play really. And this is just more trying to come in compliance with the state law.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, we'll now go to resolution twenty four dash sixty nine and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Johnson. It's going to turn into the Mr. Johnson show.
I'll be here a little bit. I wear comfortable shoes. Thank you. Dan Johnson, Public Works Director. I bring to you a kind of a unique request to the council. You've not done something like this before. You may recall in twenty twenty two, we had ordered several police vehicles from Ford and due to supply chain issues, they canceled that order. So we scrambled and Dodge was able to supply us with a handful of vehicles and you know, and it worked out okay. But we, but now we've got those Dodges in our fleet and that's, and they're ours. But Ford is doing their best to, to catch up and kind of regain our business and, and they've got seventeen interceptor SUV vehicles that they would like to sell us. And are available right now and we don't have any current budget available. So here's my proposal to the council. We have in our budget included, there's a one point five million dollars for the fleet replacement, which is the same as, as what was in the previous fiscal year's budget. In addition to an additional four hundred thousand that is being proposed out of one-time CIP to add to that one and a half million dollars for a total of one point nine million dollars for the light fleet replacement for next year. We are proposing that the council authorize a budget opening right now in this current fiscal year of roughly one point zero seven one million dollars for us to be able to purchase these seventeen vehicles and authorize their upfitting right now. And then we would simply reduce the amount that's in the budget for next year. If this is approved. So we're basically, we're really requesting an early authorization to purchase these seventeen vehicles because they're available and because we've had some, so many challenges with, challenges with the supply chain. We'd certainly recommend you make this authorization. So that is my report on this one.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Johnson?
When, when would you normally make this purchase if, if there wasn't any supply change?
Yeah, normally we would just get a regular authorization from the council. If it's in the, the budget. You know, we would do it July first, but usually we waited until the final budget was adopted after the truth in taxation hearing in August. Just in case, you know, it kind of gave us a little bit of insurance to resolve any issues that may have arisen during that, you know, during that time, but, but it would have been in August, basically. And that's when we would.
Four months early maybe.
Yep. And so we're really requesting to, because they're available now, we can get them now. And, and we, you know, so we just get them in our hands.
So it's kind of a double hit in one budget year to do two years worth of.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. And then we'll, we'll plan on the, the rest of the budget in, in, in August, essentially. We would make the recommendation to the council to purchase the rest of the light fleet and likely more police vehicles as well. But this just gets these vehicles in our hands.
And will those Dodges that we purchased when we couldn't get Ford stay in the fleet?
They will. Yep. We'll just keep them until they are retired.
We have any problems with maintenance? Cause I know most of our mechanics are Ford certified.
We, we were able to maintain them just fine. The only thing we have with Ford, so with Ford, we are certified to do maintenance or warranty work. And so as there's recalls and things like that from Ford, we actually get reimbursed from Ford, which is another reason why we want to stick with Ford. But we certainly can and do maintain the, the Dodge vehicles. We just don't get the reimbursement from the, if there's recall work, we would send it to the dealer to get that work done on the Dodges.
Assuming that we're doing the upfitting in-house or internally because it's cheaper, how much would it normally cost versus the fourteen K per vehicle?
That's a great question that I'm not prepared to answer. But yes, we do it internally. We've got, I don't know if you've ever met Tam. He's our, our upfitter and he's a master at his craft. And so, so we essentially pay Tam's salary and then buy parts. So we, there's, it's a substantial savings to the city. And I can get you a number of, of roughly what an outfit would cost, but I just don't know it off the top of my head.
I can say I've spent up to forty thousand dollars on outfit for police vehicles. This is having somebody in-house is really a savings.
Hey, looks like no more questions. Do you move on to resolution twenty four dash seventy? A new asphalt equipment trailer?
Yes. So we've been using a trailer that we've had for several years that was modified. When we first got it, I guess that it, that the ramps were too steep and the tray, the paver couldn't make it up. So the ramps were lengthened and it's been a bit of a modification to make it work and it's really wearing out. And so for thirty nine thousand, six hundred dollars, we'd like to replace it out of the classy road fund and, and it's been something that our, our fleet guys have had to repair quite a bit lately and we'd like to get a new one with your permission.
Okay. To the council for questions?
Is this a goose neck or bumper pole? And do we have something that can pull?
It's a bumper pole and we pull it with, with dump trucks, ten-wheelers. Yep.
And will the trailer you don't need anymore? Do you have any use to for lawn mowers or anything or?
It could be, but we would like to surplus it. I don't think Eric wants it anymore.
Okay.
He's tired of it.
All right. Seeing no other questions. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll step aside of the story here.
For three minutes. Okay. We'll turn the time to Ms. Young for our contract for phase one of the wetland park.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. So today we are asking for a approval of a contract to MC Green and Sons for the construction of phase one at the wetland park. But as part of that, I wanted to share a little bit of information about where we're at with, with the funding for, for this project. When we got the initial bids for phase one, the total was about four point two million. And so we worked really closely with the, the lowest possible or the lowest qualified bidder to remove some of the elements of the, of the bid so that we could get it in a manageable range. We reduced the, the cost by about three hundred and seventy five thousand. That included fencing. It included some trees and irrigation, obviously some irrigation, but eliminated it to all the trees. If we don't have the trees, we certainly don't need all the lines run. A little bit of sidewalk and some topsoil and some things that we didn't think would be a huge impact to the project. As part of that, we don't, we don't feel like there's a whole lot more that we can cut to have the project continue to, to proceed. So, so that's what we're asking is for approval of this contract. What I want to share with you is this is just part of the picture. The MC Green contract that's before you today is three point eight million. And that's, that's what we have it down to after we removed a lot of the, of the work that we had them do a line item bid that we could kind of pick and choose things that we needed to take out so that we could make it fit within the money that we have. The, the park design cost to the landscape architect that we've worked with, we did design the entire property, even though this is just phase one of construction, we did design the entire project. Dan here shortly will be talking about his road project as kind of a an element of this, they're, they're improving the road with road money, but part of the road project is bringing the utilities across to the, to the park, which is the three hundred and sixty thousand for a total cost of four point seven million. As you remember, we have a, the ARPA grant for two million. We have a trails grant through the Utah Outdoor Recreation grant that's seven hundred and fifty thousand. Stormwater funds, because this is a stormwater project and we're doing a lot of infrastructure for stormwater of one point seven million. We're going to use a hundred thousand dollars in impact fees, which brings our total funding to four point five million, four point five five. So what we're short is just under two hundred thousand. So to, to do all of this work and have the four point seven million dollar project, we would like to request just under two hundred thousand dollars in CIP money to get this project, get this phase one completed in, in all of these different elements. Specifically, the agreement today is again, just for the MC Green and Sons, but Dan has the agreement for the street project that includes the three hundred and sixty thousand. The park design costs have been paid already out of the scrap money as a, as the design, as we've, as we've, as we have gone through the process of designing and redesigning this project. So so we're asking for, like I said, just under about two hundred thousand dollars of CIP money to complete the four point seven million dollar phase one, which essentially is road and utilities. Obviously that's a, a big part of the initial infrastructure cost.
To the council for questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Okay.
You have a map, a color side plan or something you can show us because the cost for that awesome.
Yes. So as you can see, kind of this colored part is what Yes. So as you can see, kind of this colored part is what is phase one. Uh so it's the road and and utility work, which obviously is a huge cost. As part of the Utah Outdoor Recreation Trails Grant, we have the trail that goes out to the north and around uh what will be a pasture area for large animals. And that is, that's a a requirement of that of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant is that it's uh has the that element of that trail. So the this this is the whole design of the park, but it's the colored section here that is uh is the phase one that we're that we're um asking for approval today. Do you have any other questions?
The pieces that now just bring the bid down, will those be pushed to another phase?
Yes. Some we might be able to do, um part of it was tree planting. And some of it, we might be able to do some grants that we get annually. We get some grants through the uh forestry association. So we could, we could allocate some of that to it, but if if we don't have funding, then we would uh just push it forward to another phase. Yes.
And if we work with them seeing green.
Public Works has, yes.
It just seemed like there was a big.
There was.
There's some bids.
Yeah. Yep, uh Public Works was confident that they um that with with the M C Green and Suns.
Okay. Seeing no other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, well now return to the Mr. Johnson and presentations and we'll go to the Parkway Boulevard.
Yeah, Dan Johnson again. Um and they want to work with M C Green and Suns. We propose to work with M C Contractors LLC, not the same company. Um M C Green and Suns has performed very well for us in the past. They're a great contractor. And Kobe did his due diligence on M C Contractors. Um they're they're a company out of, we've never worked with them and um but they're out of Summit County. And do a lot of work for UDOT and Kobe Kobe called some references and feels like they're very qualified to do the work. So we are proposing um what we're calling the 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 that the council let us award a contract to M C Contractors LLC to the Parkway Boulevard and South Frontage Road Widing Project and Travis, I've got a little exhibit so that you can visualize where we're working. These are two unrelated projects that are in kind of the same neighborhood. This is my next presentation, but that's okay. Uh it's that item, it's it's okay. It's just a, it's a plan sheet cover. There's a PDF, single PDF, but um but they will be, so we have a couple of funding source, so this is two projects that we've we bid together as one project to to hopefully benefit benefit from the economy of scale and get a little better pricing. And um the first project is the South Frontage Road Improvement Project that's on the South Frontage Road of S R two oh one at about Sixtieth West or so. And the improvements proposed there include the construction of a two-way left turn lane for a portion of that road. So there was built a new road between Beagle Road and the S R two oh one frontage road. And the S R two oh one, S R two oh one frontage road does not have uh a two-way turn lane. So if if someone's going to stop and turn left, they blocking traffic. And so this project will will build that two-way left turn lane, but then it'll also overlay for about a mile or so. And not quite enough a mile to the east where Mountain View Corridor uh where their construction of the uh of the roadway improvements um of the South Frontage Road reconstruction ended, so. And we have state funds for that. That's that seven hundred thousand dollars that can only be used for that segment of roadway. And um and so are there any questions first on that first project? That the S R two oh one South Frontage Road Project? And then I'll talk now on the uh Parkway Boulevard roadway widening project. Um that is, it's it's really just an opportunity that parks had the had the roadway work designed. And um as part of their project, they actually designed the roadway improvements and um we saw it as an op- we we've actually also got the work that's happening east of sixty four hundred west um to uh that's it, that's a reconstruction federally funded reconstruction project that has been awarded to uh Staker and Parsons, I believe. And will be, so that'll be under construction and this is just immediately west of that. We felt like this was a good opportunity to get those improvements. And ultimately make it a better transition into the park property because they then could have their roadway improvements that actually will tie into what the road will ultimately look like and we will, and that will be the ultimate configuration of that, so. We're using a different uh kind of a conglomeration of funds to pay for for this Parkway Boulevard project, including stormwater utility, classy roads and transportation sales tax, so. Are there questions that I can answer about that project?
Okay, any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay.
Okay.
I see you need.
All right.
We'll move to resolution twenty four dash seventy three. And you're going to combine our first communication item with this presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so or yeah, are you ready for now for me to talk about sanitation?
You may.
All right.
Trash and recycling.
I will. Let's talk trash as it is said. Hold on until my presentation's ready. That's it. Ah, great. Hey, okay, so um we gave an introduction a little bit into uh when we during the strategic plan presentations, we mentioned that our um contract with with Ace's disposal is is nearing completion. It's it's we're about two years out. And so it's time to start thinking about um what the the next contract might look like and so. But uh as we do that, I'm really just going to run through what our current contract looks like. Um get you thinking about what services we might want to include um in that next contract. And then um also talk about a proposed uh price increase from Ace on his current contract. So this is just a reminder, you all have seen this slide several times, reminder of the timeline of our of our contract with Ace. Um the original term of the contract ends in July and the two extensions begin immediately and and will, the contract will be terminated July of twenty twenty six, so. Um roughly, you know, this time next year, I'll be working on the preparation of the the R F P and getting the document. It'll probably be out to bid and we will be uh rolling um as far as getting our next contract procured. And so we're just doing a little bit of early legwork to to try to understand what the council's desires are for service and we fit that in. So this is just a list of some current elements and then maybe some potential elements. And I'm not going to dwell on this too long. We're just going to just talk about each of these and so. If you were wondering, this is uh is where the the money goes um generally on our sanitation contracts, so. Roughly a third of it goes to to the landfill to pay to dispose it. Thirty eight percent residential garbage collection. Um we actually don't pay anything really for the city facility dumpsters. Um just with the contract structured. And then our neighborhood cleanup program, we pay, that's about four percent of the cost of this of the contract. The bulky waste is about six. Uh recycle surcharge, we'll talk about that in a little bit, but basically recycle's a little over twenty percent um of what we pay, we pay for our recycling program, so.
Dan, on the the landfill, I know that Ace takes the neighborhood trash to their own landfill.
They have a transfer station in Salt Lake City, then then they load it up on bigger trucks and haul it to the Intermountain Regional landfill in Airfield, just south of Eagle Mountain.
And and is that what we're paying for with this thirty one percent?
Yes. It is, yes. Yep. Um, all right. And so this is a distribution of of what we collect and or where we where we collect. You know, from where does our garbage come? So uh as you would imagine, most of it comes from the garbage cans in weekly collection, eighty one percent. Um the recycle is accounts for about eight percent of our tonnage. The bulky waste, not insignificant at five percent, neighborhood dumpsters at four percent. My hometown is is really hauling a lot of garbage, but uh one percent and then some random other things that we do is about one percent, so. Roughly, if you if you account for recycle and the the stuff we haul directly to the landfill, we're hauling away roughly fifty five thousand tons of trash. So again, the weekly um service is is a mandatory service. Every single family uh dwelling and duplex in the city is required to pay for this service. Um you we have over twenty seven thousand five hundred some odd cans, first cans and then ninety five hundred second cans, so. Give you a feel for the magnitude of what's happening there. And then the recycle. This is the distribution of our recycled materials that we pick up, so you know, almost thirty percent of that is garbage that just gets, you know, it's stuff that just gets thrown in there. And it ends up going straight to the landfill. Most of what we get is is cardboard, a little bit of paper and some plastics and some metals. But uh and then we have, so recycle is an opt-out program. We do not, that's not mandatory for our our residents. Um it it was when it was first begun, but but then um the the ordinance was changed and and residents were given the option to opt out. And as you can see, some did, but most didn't. Most have kept it, so. Um and then just to get a feel for what recycling costs, this, I pulled all the recycling costs from fiscal year twenty two, twenty three and we pay pay roughly a million dollars for the recycling, the for the collection uh and the processing charge we'll talk, I'll talk about on this next slide, so. In twenty eighteen, almost immediately after our contract was executed with Ace, um the uh recycled materials market kind of went haywire. And um you know, the things that that were were once that people would once pay for that, you know, the market flipped upside down. I think it had to do with China not taking plastics and things like that, but um you know, the costs to actually recycle those materials went kind of went crazy and went through the roof and so Ace came and proposed a change to the to the contract, which included a surcharge and so um they, we basically pay, so they have, they pay to process the materials and the agreement that we made was anything above twenty five dollars a ton. Um anything under twenty five dollars a ton, they pay for, and that's just included in the original bid. And then anything between twenty five and sixty dollars a ton, we would pay that difference. And so this is just a view of what that monthly surcharge has looked like over time from twenty eighteen to now, and it's it's gone up and it's gone down and it's actually gone negative where they gave us money back. Um but then, so um I guess bottom line is I believe I said we paid in twenty twenty three, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in that surcharge um total for the whole year. And it's just a, it's just one of the realities of running a recycle program. Um is figuring out, you know, is just managing that cost. So as we as we work toward our next contract, we'll just need to be thinking of ways um that we can help the contractor to manage risk, um but provide the the service that we that, you know, the council requests from from recycling, so. If that makes any sense, I'm moving on unless I hear heads nodding or. Um bulky waste is a service that the city provides. Uh no additional charge to each resident, so every, you know, you're, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but you can box up your stuff and put it in front of your yard, bulky, big things. Um we'll take mattresses, even some appliances, right? And you know, it's a great service for the residents. Um the pros are, it it's a great way to get rid of a lot of clutter and and you know, it it's it produces about five percent of our total waste, but the obvious con is it's unsightly for a little while and sometimes people get over anxious and get their stuff out and it's on the street and we get calls and complaints about garbage that's left there longer than it should be and so just just, you know, plant it in your in your heads, eh eh think about bulky base as we contemplate our future contract. And the neighborhood cleanup program, pretty popular program in some areas and some in other areas it's not. But again, it's it's a, it's fighting for a decent share of our garbage. Four percent of our total waste comes from the neighborhood cleanup program. Which is, we don't schedule us an individual dumpster. So if you want a dumpster, you don't call the city to get a dumpster. You call the city and get your neighborhood dumpsters and then you pass out flyers and take ownership for the program and get your neighbors, your neighbors excited and get them to all work together to clean up their dumpsters, twelve dumpsters at a time. And so we run that from March to November and um scheduled beginning in February and uh um right now, we're booked up through the middle of July. So it's been, you know, it's it's well-loved and this next slide will give you kind of a feel for where the uh where the requests for for dumpsters are coming from. And I'm going to move my that thing so you can see a little bit better. Um so the red, the the red or the area, the 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 less frequent they use the dumpster program. This is about nine years worth of data that Paul's compiled for us and the little dots are are areas, neighborhoods that have actually scheduled it this year, so. Gives you a feel for some neighborhoods use it every single year and they're the first to call in February when Ray starts scheduling these things and some don't use it at all. So um don't know if that's a function of whether they don't know about it. I think it goes out in our social media. It's a I think it's well advertised, but but there's obviously places that don't use it and um and places that do, so. It's a a great program, but it's also something again for you to ponder and contemplate on on uh, you know, if you were to make changes when we rebid, what would that look like, so. I'm going to keep moving unless I see anybody pulls me otherwise. Then Operation My Hometown is is not been a a part of the contract. It's really just an additional service that we've requested of Ace and they performed very well. They've they've responded to our needs to bring dumpsters when we need dumpsters. And very grateful for it, but it's something that we would likely include in our next contract and get competitive bids for this work as well, so. Um city facility collection, uh in this current contract, we really, their their bid is zero dollars and so it's just a service that's just included, but it's something that we will obviously need to include. Public events, there's a a shred and uh e-waste event that we hold every year. It's in the contract that Ace Ace runs for us. And we support them with staff as well. This year it's on May eleventh and we hold it at Lot D in the of the Maverick Center. And um it's a very, like it's it's busy. As soon as the gates open, we got cars wrapped around the parking lot and and uh they they're shredding documents as fast as they can and and they've also um in recent years, in the last couple of years, um I'm going to forget the name, uh the what the name of the tire company. Uh they've also at that at that same event have have come and um and provided tire disposal. So that's outside of our contract with Ace. That's just them. Uh Southern Tire Mart wanting to provide uh a service to the community. So we're grateful for what they've done. Um but it's not part of our contract. Uh and so just something to ponder. They, so the e-waste is, you know, they the the e-waste that's collected at that is is taken to a recycle facility that literally takes computers apart and TVs and vacuum tubes and all the things that you could and the only thing that they don't recycle is wood, like wood from an old TV or something that they would collect, so they but but that comes at a cost, you know, so that's that's definitely, that's not free and but uh it's a good service that that's provided to give residents an opportunity to get rid of electronics in a safe way that won't end up with them being in the landfill, but um but it still comes at a, you know, pound for pound, it's it's quite expensive, but uh once a year, it's a, it's a great opportunity for folks to get rid of their stuff, so. Again, more to ponder for the future. Uh green waste, we really don't have it. We don't have a green waste and I don't recommend that we have a green waste program. Um for uh several reasons, um several cities struggle with what to do with the green waste is, you know, what's actually produced with it. You need to have a place to take it and in the valley, we don't have a lot of great options. Trans Jordan used to, they used to lease some land from Kennebec, but that's not available anymore and so uh other cities that have been using that source are now just taking the green waste in in a single truck and with the with trash and and hauling it to the landfill. So I wouldn't recommend that we start that, but as long as we're pondering, let's ponder on everything.
I have a question about two, sorry, two slides back on the waste.
Yeah.
What was the difference between twenty two and twenty three?
I think people heard about it. I think it was probably, my guess is that they just found out about it and and I don't know. I really don't know the difference. They, it could have been the way that our our messaging went out. Um it, because we've always just called it a shred event. That's what I've called it, but it's a shred and e-waste and tire disposal event. So we've had to message the tire, the first year that we did the tires, we So we've had to message the tire. The first year that we did the tires, we had people come with trailers full of tires. As tall as this room and we'd have to say, sorry, you've kind of exceeded the. The limit that didn't exist, but now I think we tell them four tires for family, so.
Because do we check residency on any of this?
No.
Just anybody in the valley can bring their stuff.
Anybody can bring it. But most communities are providing some kind of a service like this as well, so. Um, I don't really think we get from the mail that I've checked, just getting. We shut it off. Yeah, that was on record, huh?
Yeah.
Shouldn't joke. No, I I don't know where we where they come from, but I'm pretty sure that it's pretty local, but just because of how we advertise. Um, was that was that it, sir? Okay. Glass recycling. Um, so we have three different uh places that uh. Can that that ACE will collect glass drop off. At the fitness center, the public works operation facility in Maverick Center Lot D on that uh on that. And um part of the contract and, you know, we you're all aware of the momentum contract that's available to the residents and. I don't recommend interfering with that at all. Uh, really, if if we were to, when we rebid our contract, I would just recommend that we have. Places for people to drop glass off if they choose and then leave the uh. The curbside glass recycling to momentum. So. That would be my recommendation, but.
So in the past, our. Yeah, our glass recycling bin out at the fitness center has gotten a lot of graffiti. Is there anybody monitoring these for graffiti?
I don't know the answer to that. Paul says yes.
Okay. I haven't been doing my normal breakfast in the park, so I haven't called in any this year.
Well, then that means it didn't happen, right?
No. So.
Yeah, Paul says yes, but um. Yeah. Okay. Um, and then landfill. So like I mentioned before, the uh most of our trash goes to the Intermountain Regional Landfill. In Utah County. And um ACE has opted, they've actually had some capacity issues at their transfer station. From time to time, and when that happens, they send their trucks straight to Salt Lake Valley landfill, but they pay those bills directly. Um, and we just pay the contract price, whatever is in our contract. And so when we bid this contract um through June thirtieth of twenty nineteen, we were paying the landfill. We had a contract with the landfill at that point. And um and then after that, we requested contractors to provide us a bid. Um, and and then. And the the prices only included uh up to the end of the the regular. Years of the contract. And so theoretically, we don't have a contract price after July. First of twenty twenty four, but they're not requesting an increase. So we will have a contract price. It'll just be the same as this year. Uh, for disposal. Um, and so as we think about what we do in the future, we will have conversations with the Salt Lake Valley landfill. Um, and and see if if we can get a great price from them and 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 then. We'll also bid the uh disposal in the contract and give us the option to choose most likely is what I'd recommend that we would do. So that we have the um. Really our our options covered for. Um. For really getting the the best price that we can for disposal. So we don't own our own landfill, nor do I recommend that we build one or buy one, but uh. So we're we're going to be. Um. Subject to whatever the market will give us on disposal.
It's interesting to me, Dan, and a bit ironic that that. Salt Lake City uses their revenues from. This landfill to fund their sustainability department. And their prices are so high that we have to. Hall Hall. The fair field which pollutes the air.
Sure.
And and fights what they're trying to prevent with their.
Sure. Yep.
So if if anyone there has some. Logic and reasoning. Well, the price so that we wouldn't have to take it to fair.
Yeah, there's a million and a half dollars that is available, you know, if they if they wanted our garbage. And I think that there's to some extent li- a likelihood that they will want it. I mean, they what, of course they will. Um, and so I think there's a good chance that our that we end up in a situation. That our our garbage goes out here. It's really close, but um. But I don't know. Definitely an interesting observation, though. Um, just that this is really just a reminder of where our fee sits and the graph at the bottom is a is a history of. The uh the fee clear back to nineteen ninety. Um, and the the council authorized uh two fee increases, one in twenty twenty three and one that took place. January first of twenty twenty four of a dollar each and. Um, that puts us in a good position going into this new contract. We are gonna have a healthy fund balance and we don't recommend changing this, and I think we're gonna be in a good place. Given the new contract and once we know what those numbers are, um, we'll uh. We'll know what that might look like in two years, but I think for now, we're in great shape that way. So. Um, and then. As you'll recall, we've we've I've had this conversation with the council a couple of times in the last, this will be the third in the third year in a row that we've requested that the ACE has requested. In addition to their uh their increases built into the contract. So when Russ Willardson, my predecessor negotiated this contract with ACE, they. They ended up. At in fact, I'm gonna jump to the next slide. They ended up with a. A uh an automatic two and a half percent annual price increase built into the contract. And and for the first couple of years, so the the that dark line. Uh, corresponds with the percentage on the right. The bars correspond with the price on the left. And so for the first couple of years, they were actually below the CPI. Um, so the the dark line is the CPI, um, the Consumer Price Index, which is a. An inflation index that measures inflation year over year. And um, and so they were with that two and a half percent that was bid into the contract, built into the contract, they were. Doing better than the CPI. And um, and then uh, you know, we had from twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, the inflation. Kind of again went went crazy and we um and so. We saw much higher inflation rates. And and so they came and requested. An additional two and a half percent each year, and that's the same request that they're making this year. It'll roughly cost the city. If if you execute it, will cost the city an additional eighty thousand dollars a year. And so I'll walk through this chart just a little bit. So the. The that dark line, like I said, is this the Consumer Price Index. That orange line. Is what is being proposed right now um from a percentage standpoint. It's just an additional two and a half percent. Uh, it'd be an additional eighty thousand dollars per year. Um, so this year and through the next year and. You know, obviously, we don't know if they're gonna request. Anything additional next year, but um and then that blue line shows where that that blue. Soft line, that's that represents that two and a half percent annual increase that's built into the contract. And so um, the thing I think is notable is that uh. So most cities, and this this, I guess this is something we're gonna have to think about with how we bid the next contract. In order for us to secure. A really favorable price, we're gonna need to build some kind of a price increase into the contract. And so. You know, otherwise the contractors will bid, they'll bid that risk into the contract and we'll pay for it anyway, but is is a high likelihood that we pay more than we would have. And so. We'll have to build something into it, whether it's. Tied to fuel indexes or Consumer Price Index. Most cities, um ACE reports to me that they that they use a Consumer Price Index. Which if had we use a CPI. Inflator, we would have been paying substantially, you know, a decent amount more than we are now. And so. Um, I would recommend that the council authorize this this additional two and a half percent. Um, because we do need ACE to, they they they've also again agreed to take the trash without. To to dispose of the trash in the landfill without a price increase. So this really, this two and a half percent really covers. Any price increase that we'd seen in the trash. Disposal cost and um and just their general operating expenses. So. And unless I skip something, I think that's really the end of my presentation. Unless you have any questions.
Hey, to the council for questions. Hey, well done. No questions.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now turn the time to Mr. Bunderson. And he will introduce our next presentation.
Mayor, counsel, um Eric Bunderson, city attorney and also counsel to the um what we call. The Professional Standards Review Board. And tonight we're getting a presentation on five quarters of the cases that they have reviewed. Um, a uh, oh yeah, there we go, Professional Standards Review Board. Um, you can see it on your screen now. And so. Um, when I was a a new prosecutor here at West Valley City. Uh, one of the things we do to prepare for the next day's court would would be to read all the police reports. You know, for next day's cases, and sometimes there'd be fifty or sometimes there'd be less and uh and that that was basically my full time job. Um, the members of this board as a part time job. Read more cases than that in a month, I would bet. Um, they meet once a month and um they go over all uses of force, vehicular. Pursuits and internal affairs cases. And um they have dealt with our. Our technology changes, including at one point. Those police reports being written as it just a wall of text, which did not look fun. Um, the the members are appointed on a two year term. And um that term is renewable. That is appointed by the city manager with the advice and consent of the council. Um, we're very happy with the people that we have on that board. Right now, um Mariah Westhoff, uh Michael Finch, who is here. Um, Julian Jolly, Barbara Fields, Matt McPherson, Micah Bruner. And your presenter tonight, Abby Dezanmon, who is the head of that um. Uh, the chair of that board. She is one of our, and they all are. Um, one of our our greatest assets and cheerleaders and supporters of. Uh, the city and the police department out there, and they do a fantastic job. Um, with that, I will pull up her presentation and let her rip. Second. All the ghosts of the past there. I got it, Trev. There we go. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lang, uh members of the city council and Mr. Pele. It is very nice to finally see you. Um, I'm gonna get on your calendar. We're gonna do a meeting one of these days. Um, thank you, Eric, for that very gracious introduction. Um, again, my name is Abby Dezanmon. I have been a member of PSRB for eleven years, maybe twelve years. I first joined PSRB in its original iteration, um when we had the old school, old school members who were. I think members of PSRB for twenty years. I'm the lone holdover from that. When we, when I first started. Um, my very first meeting was eight hours long. We had everything in paper, and so when I showed up, I had a stack that was like. This and it was insane. We have now graduated to laptops. I do have to mention that my laptop is about eight years old, so I might need a new one soon. Um, and uh, it's been, it's been great to see the transition in technology. Um, one of our most recent acquisitions in technology is access to body worn camera. I think that's been maybe. A year. Has it been that long, Michael? Yeah, it's maybe been a year since we've been, since we've received access. That was a project that took maybe four years of negotiation. With the department and with funding. Um, I am happy to say that we have now gained that access. All of the members of PSRB have been. Read the Riot Act as far as accessing body worn camera that is not related to any of our cases. Um, that we all understand that it is a misdemeanor to do that and that we are not allowed to do this. So. Um, it has helped our review of cases. Um, we try to rely just on the written reports, but if we have any questions, we do have the body worn camera that we can rely on. Um, and we no longer have to wait for an officer to pull it up in the middle of one of our meetings unless there are any questions. So we are very appreciative of the access to that information. Um, on average, we do review about eighty cases. I want to say it probably takes. Three or four hours to review the cases, and then our meetings are the second Thursday of every month at eight thirty in the morning. Um, and I think maybe our longest meeting recently has been six hours. Um, and that usually we go through, we can, we can summarily address cases. We have a spreadsheet and we mark X's for cases that we don't need to discuss, and then we'll put comments in the little Excel squares where we. Have questions and those will take up most of our time. I think in a typical meeting, we'll maybe talk about three or four cases, and that's what takes. So long are those cases that we really do have questions about. Um, other changes that I want to discuss that I would like to acknowledge. Is that there has been a noticeable improvement in our report writing. Um, for those who don't know, I have a previous life as a criminal defense attorney. I've. Been since reformed and now do boring civil litigation. Um, but I like to say that West Valley hands down has some of the best report writing in the state, and I've seen reports from. Every jurisdiction, literally in the state of Utah. And we only continue to improve and we owe that in large part to. Our advisors who are on the committee with us. We have Shane Matheson. We recently uh. Paul Gill recently rotated off. Um, but in our meetings, if we ever have any questions or comments about report writing. Almost instantaneously Shane is sending messages to his sergeants and lieutenants and telling them. These are the questions, these are the concerns that PSRB has, and then they make it a training issue. So as soon as we get new new officers, um they are getting the new training as to how to write a report, and it's been fantastic. Um, we've seen a noticeable decline and you'll see in our report in our. Numbers here, um, reports that are sent back for more information. Um, these numbers are. Markedly smaller than what they were when I first started here. So this is something that. We should be very impressed with. Our officers do a really good job. Um, and they are proud of the work that they do and you can tell, and we're happy to have them. Um, okay, let's go to the fun stuff, the presentation of numbers. So the first is the January through March twenty twenty three. In January, we had sixty one cases that we reviewed, February a hundred and seven, and in March seventy five cases. Of those, we found one out of policy, which was a pursuit following a traffic violation. Um, that's a recent uh revision in our pursuit policy. Um, I think that we're probably starting to phase out pursuits in vehicular. I should. I should clarify that these are vehicular pursuits. These are not foot pursuits. These are vehicular pursuits. Um, but one of the changes has been um curtailing vehicle pursuits for traffic infractions. Um, and so this is the the one case that we found out of policy for the first quarter of twenty twenty three was a vehicular pursuit on a traffic violation. Um, Eric, do you want to go to, sorry, page through, sorry, page four of that? Of this uh first packet of information is. You will see that the vehicular pursuit was less than one minute long for a traffic violation, which again is not allowed by policy. And it was addressed by a letter of reprimand and a ten hour suspension. Um, for us and members of the community, we are. Um, I think encouraged by this movement to to move away from vehicular pursuits because we know how dangerous they can be. Not just to the officers, not just to the subject of the pursuit, but also people who are in the community. Um, there was one. Pursuit that had resulted in a fatality of a bystander, and we found that pursuit also out of policy. I don't remember what quarter. That was, I think it was end of quarter last year. Um, just to clarify, so we are. We exist by ordinance. The ordinance broadly says that we review every use of force in West Valley. Those are OC, which is um. Pepper spray, uh impact round, which is less lethal, pursuits, vehicle pursuits, physical, which is when when our officers go hands on. Show of force, which is a display of a firearm. Firearm use, which is a firearm discharge. Uh, we used to, when I started way back in the day. Um, we used to do firearm discharge reviews when our officers had to put down wildlife. Including deer that would be hit that were hit by cars on Bacchus. We stopped reviewing those. We no longer need to review those. We stopped reviewing those, we no longer need to review those thankfully. Um, taser deployment, not displayed baton, and then forced entry, enforced entry only if there is an individual who was behind the door. Um, that they are trying to apprehend, tire spikes are the tire spikes that they throw out, and we also do. Uh, dry spikes, which is when an officer goes behind a vehicle that's parked and puts. The two, two or three spikes behind the wheel, so that when the person drives off, it'll it'll deflate the tire. So just so the a clarification of, sorry, of what was on that uh, first page. Um, moving now on to. The second quarter of twenty twenty-three, we reviewed eighty-three cases in April. Eighty-four cases in May, eighty-two in June. We found one again in that quarter out of policy. Most we will find in policy, and most you will see that our reviews are either physical or show of force. Show of force also includes um, fire firearm displays in a high-risk stop, that's part of our policy here in West Valley. Um, a high-risk display on a on a vehicle stop is when the vehicle has been stolen. So our policy specifically says if you were in a high-risk stop, that is a defined term, then policy is to show your firearm. Um, one of the issues that we had as members of PSRB is that we would constantly see in an officer's report. Based on my experience in my training, I pulled out my firearm. We started to notice that very new officers were using that language, officers who were still out in the field training. So we brought that up to again Shane, and we asked him to address this. With his officers, and now we are seeing fewer and fewer cases like that, that they're not saying based off of my experience and my training because. When you're a field officer or a training officer, how much experience do you really have, and that's none. So we have asked them to now just rely on the policy because the policy again does specifically say that if you are engaged in a high-risk stop. That you were to pull out your firearm, um, that takes away some of the, not responsibility, but. It doesn't make it um, an arbitrary decision, it is the policy for our police department to to show a firearm. When you were pulling over a stolen vehicle. So again, kudos to the officers to being amenable and flexible to um, the changing needs of of our community. Uh, moving on to. The next quarter, July through September of twenty twenty-three. There were ninety-three cases that we reviewed in July, fifty-five in August, seventy-three in September. Of those, we actually found two out of policy, so that needs to be corrected. The second that we found out, the first that we found out of policy was another uh, vehicular pursuit um, following a. Let's see, hold on, sorry, yes, that's right, it was a short pursuit um, following a. Uh, a car who fled from a traffic stop, again, we just don't, we don't pursue on traffic stops. Um, the second that we actually found out of policy. Is an officer who had initiated a law enforcement activity while he was off duty. Um, we found that this officer should not have initiated that activity for um, witnessing a minor crime. I don't remember now what the recommendation or what the discipline was after finding this out of policy, I think it was just a training issue. Do you recall, Michael? Was it just a training issue? So when we find these, any activity out of policy. Um, we send it back to the officer and we send it back to his um, his or her supervising officers that they can address it with the officer. None of, none of our recommendations, none of our findings fall into a black hole, they all make their way back up to somebody who is going to make sure that it's being addressed. And then now moving on to October through December, the final quarter of twenty twenty-three. In October, we reviewed sixty-seven cases, November seventy-eight cases, and then December seventy-seven cases. Of those, we found zero out of policy. And then finally, January through March of twenty twenty-four, we reviewed forty-five cases in January, forty-eight cases in February, and a hundred and four in March. We found two of those cases out of policy for that quarter. Um, one of them was a pursuit on a traffic stop. And the second was a pursuit out of policy when there was already two other cars that are involved, so you, West Valley Police. Or West Valley Policy requires only two um, two vehicles in pursuit unless the third is a canine. Um, cadence almost always automatically get, I don't know if it's automatic, but cadence are almost always allowed to be the third in a pursuit. Um, the third car was not uh, was not a canine vehicle, so we found that out of policy. So I breeze through the numbers, are there any questions about um, my presentation, about what we do as PSRB?
Questions. None, you did a very good job.
Okay, well, thank you, and you know, we just want to always show our appreciation for our officers. Um, I know that I say this every time I come here, but I hope that you know that it's genuine. We have options of where we want to live, and I would not be raising my family here in West Valley if we weren't. Confident in the skills of our department, and it's very encouraging. To us and to the members of uh, or to the citizens of West Valley, knowing that our officers are always in the continuous pursuit. Of improving not just their skills, but also their relationship with the with the with the citizens here. So thank you to the officers, thank you to city council for continuing to support PSRB. Um, and uh, you know, as technology improves, be sure that we'll probably be asking for more, so. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, yeah, this, this is important to us as a council, and we really appreciate the words that you you guys do.
Happy to do it, thank you.
It's a lot.
A lot of time. All right, we'll move on to our council calendar. Was there any concerns with the calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to potential future agenda items, anyone have anything? Okay, I've received another email from Mr. Oldson about the cauldron. Um, we didn't get to it in strategic plan, so. Is there an overwhelming desire to three, spend the three hundred thousand dollars to install the cauldron at the Maverick Center? Remembering that we have to ask permission every time we want to light it or use it. It's not really ours if we install it.
That cost doesn't include the ongoing maintenance and.
Yeah, it is ours if it needs to be fixed.
Oh, probably, yeah, if something happens to it, but otherwise we have to ask permission for everything.
Would be cool to have it, but that's uh, that's the price tag.
Yeah, and that's the minimum.
That I don't know, I could justify to my neighbors that, yeah, this is something we're all paying for.
Yeah.
It's fun, it's nice, it's historic, but uh. The note for me.
I've stood in the past, I've already got the. The one item that was here during the Olympics, Auburn was never here during the Olympics. Already got that other one out on the street since you tried to be Olympics.
I love the enthusiasm, dude was like, oh, load my truck, I'll load it myself, you know, yeah, unfortunately, it's not that easy, or cheap.
Right. Anybody else? Okay, we will send our regrets to Mr. Oldson, that, tell me, it's not gonna happen.
Mayor, I believe that Scott uh, had a comment as well.
Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, I I'm sure um, you won't be surprised that I'm not excited about the cauldron. At least the cost of it, but the the other item that I had, it could just be a communication item, if uh. I noticed that there's a lot of trucks on our parking lots at uh, the amphitheater. I just wondered if we're leasing out those parking lots or kind of what the status is for that, thanks.
I'm trying to think what it's called, Utah First Credit Union, First Credit, um, the parking lots that are owned by us around there. Do you have a, does anybody have an answer? Right, can we bring back that? Okay, for communication.
Sorry, so there were trucks, is what, doing some work there right now?
No, it's more like a used car lot or a new car lot, that's just got a lot of vehicles over there.
Yeah, or something, okay, we'll look into it.
So I don't know if it's part of the Ken Garf that's down at the old newspaper. If somebody's using it, they might as well be paying for it, yeah. Or they just parked them up there, nobody said anything, so they think they're fine.
It's a donation.
Okay. Any other items for future agenda? Okay, seeing none, council reports.
Several of us went to the Utah League of Cities and Towns Midyear Conference. And uh, from from my views, it was time well spent. You got some good ideas, and I'm gonna review my notes and. And add to the potential future agenda items with some some of the ideas.
Okay, thank you. For myself, the classes were a lot better this year, there was one I probably should have changed out of, but. It worked all right. Everybody else went to the other one that time and got a lot of good information about meetings, so. Nobody else? Okay.
Any particular hot topics that everyone, all the cities are talking about right now, or?
Um.
I get, yeah, besides money, right, that's always there.
I noticed that almost everybody knew our new city manager, he was always surrounded by by old friends, I think. But one great thing about him is he has so many connections in our state that that we can take advantage of.
Like the prodigal son coming back.
Yeah, you were very welcome. So. All right, we'll move on to our review of our RDA. Housing Authority and Building Authority for next week, we'll turn the time to Mr. Welch. And these are all going to be budgets that we actually approve, not tentatives next week. Or in two weeks, yes, thank you. And. Turn the time over to Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Jim Welch, Finance Director. Um, I mentioned the uh, adoption of the the proposal and adoption of the budgets of the redevelopment agency, the Building Authority and the Housing Authority. And that's what the what these ones represent. The um, redevelopment agency uh, does show some fairly significant increases in the last couple of years. That is due to additional increment that's beginning to come in from some of the larger areas. I know the Northwest DDA is beginning to produce additional revenues, also there are uh, some of the fund balances are going to be spent. Um, in increment payments and uh. Some various other adjustments, debt service that is now eligible for payment from increment. And with those changes, that will increase the budget. Um, let's see, I think it was approximately. Seven million dollars uh, from the previous year's budgeted. So that's uh, largely a result of the age of the RDA and the growth of the RDA. Uh, I think we'd call that a good thing. So anyway, that's that is a significant change in the redevelopment agency budget, and I'd be happy to answer the question, any questions on that one. That I have detail for, and if there is something specific to a project area, we could certainly refer to um, to John for that.
Okay, any questions on the RDA? Okay.
Okay, uh, the Housing Authority uh, remains relatively unchanged, there was a little bit of decrease in vouchers that we're receiving this year. Other than that, it remains approximately the same. And then the Building Authority is a, is an agency that we administer as a separate budget. That is, that exists solely for the purpose of uh, debt service for building authority projects, so there's transfers in, transfers out, they always. Balance, uh, the net is zero, so with that, that's about as complicated as it gets.
Okay, are there any questions on either of the last two?
Maybe you see the, the minutes that we're going to approve for the Housing Authority meetings?
Uh, that meeting scheduled tonight, so it'll it'll be on there.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Welch.
Thank you.
All right, um. We do have a need for a closed session, do we have time now, or do you want to do it after regular? We have seventeen minutes.
I guess we can do it all at once, or maybe if we do, there are a couple of items that we can knock out pretty quick.
Okay. All right. Extend after, okay, so um, we need a closed session for reasonable intimate. Litigation and for personnel competency, professional competency. Someone would like to make that motion?
Move that we go to a closed session to discuss professional competency and potential or imminent um, litigation. And that we uh. After that that business, we adjourn without any further business.
Second. Can we have a motion a second, Ms. Kamic? Councilman Dezamano?
Aye.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon? Maybe I'll come back to him, Councilman Hugh?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordville?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon? Baling? Yes. Motion passes, you know, okay, oh, there it goes. Yep, hey, we will give you a couple of minutes and. Go into a closed session.